I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to order. We will begin with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, we're very, very grateful for your calming presence in our lives. We're grateful for all the things we can come to you about. We ask, Father, your presence tonight in this meeting as we go about the very important business of this county. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is that we release my entire United States of America into a republic in which stands, one nation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any -- we're going to discussion. Are there any additions, deletions, or any other alterations proposed for the agenda for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedules. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next scheduled meeting of the commission is a work session scheduled for next Thursday morning, October the 5th, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. That brings us to honorary resolutions.
Pardon me, I'm positive I said October.
Oh, did you?
So let's do this in August. I suggest we do it then.
It might be a little bit too much time between meetings at that point. I guess you were contemplating a vacation for it.
Maybe I was. Halloween, I was thinking about Halloween.
All right. Thank you for the correction. That brings us to honorary resolutions. We have none on list for tonight. Discussion items, there aren't listed. Public hearings, no public hearings are listed for this evening. That brings us to our consent agenda. Just to remind commissioners that any commissioner may, of course, remove an item from the consent agenda and move it to regular agenda if they so choose to do so. That said, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of our consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda as published. Discussion, Commissioner Thompson? Very well. Commissioner Carpenter, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular session, or excuse me, regular agenda. We have, I think, the first two items are related. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the first two items are 2021-192 and 2021-193, all related to the approval request of a subdivision replat of Lot 6 of Apex Acres, and Planning and Zoning is here for further comment.
Please proceed.
This is Kip Jones, planning and zoning manager. So this is a rezoning and final plat for the replat of Lot 6 of Apex Acres that we discussed last week. Got it pulled up on the screen. The property is approximately 36 acres. The proposal is to subdivide it into three lots. There is a five-acre lot, 6A, that does not have a house on it currently. It would be able to be built on if approved for one single-family home. Lot 6B is an approximately 11-acre lot that has an existing home on it. Another home would not be allowed. And then the back lot is served by an easement. It's 20-plus acres, and it would be a buildable lot as well for one additional house. As I stated, this is a rezoning that has five rezoning criteria, as with any rezoning case, that review and decision-making bodies should consider. The applicant received all their outside agency approvals, including from the highway, water, and health departments. The ponds on the existing property were inspected and noted to be in good condition. We did receive opposition to this case, and those letters of opposition have been included in the transmittal for this case. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to zero to one to recommend approval of the rezoning and final plat with the conditions that you can see in Exhibit A. I would be happy to answer any specific questions, and the property owner is present as well.
Thank you. Have we gotten any comments either before or opposed since closing the packet here? Have we gotten any additional comments submitted to the commission? Thank you.
What you're receiving is a letter of support that has come in since the last meeting, yes.
Okay. This is one I believe that I received by email, but I want to make sure the commissioners all had the ability to have it both email and hard copy of that. So I believe that we've gotten all of the citizen submitted commentary in our hands at this moment, so just want to make sure that that was indeed the case. I would ask Mr. Jones, on the application of these two items, does it meet the requirements specified in our comprehensive plan and the rezoning criteria for the county land development code?
I believe it meets all the requirements of the comp plan and the land development code.
Okay. Are there any other questions from other commissioners, Mr. Jones? Seeing none. Would the -- let's see, is there a motion related to 2021-192, 193?
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-192 and 193.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-192, 193. Discussion. Are there any questions from the commission before we go to the applicant?
Just, if I may so far clear, because it is something coming out of planning and zoning, the motion is to approve and to mark both as approvals, okay? To approve and approve.
Approve and approve.
Right. What the counselor was talking about was basically a technical issue that was required on the documents themselves, so it was still for approval, but it's just to make sure that the motion included that piece of technical information. With that, if the applicant would like to come forward, certainly it's not required, but we certainly welcome the applicant to come forward and make any comments that they feel would be helpful. After the applicant, we will then hear from other members of the public who would like to make their comments known. So we have a podium there. As this person is making their way up, a couple of items. Make sure that the light at the base of the stand is green. Please speak into the microphone directly so that we can hear you properly. And for the benefit of our audio recordings, if you could state your name, that way we will know who is speaking if we are reviewing these recordings. So with that, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nanette Foster Riley, and along with my husband, John Riley, who could not be here this evening, we're the owners of the lot for which the application is being considered this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. I also do have some remarks and perspective to share on the application, including some of the opposition that we have read. I can do that now, or, you know, do that following your questions or following public comment if you prefer.
It might be helpful if, and again, you know, we want you to take all the time you need, but, you know, if you could just make sure it is as compact a statement as you can reasonably make it, but we do want to make sure we hear. So this is your opportunity to make those comments, so you certainly are free to go ahead.
Thank you very much. You might want to be careful telling me I need to take as much time as I need. I can be conversant. At any rate, I will try to be succinct and very relevant and not repeat some of the information that has been included in email and try to summarize it as quickly as I can. I would like to cover four points, and I'll try to keep an eye on the time, and I'll abbreviate if I feel I've gone too far into the commission's time, because I know you have a full agenda tonight. What I'd really like to do is talk, number one, about why we believe the application is approvable. This is really a little bit of a summary of the email I sent to you on the 19th of July. I almost said October. I would be able to summarize that in a minute or two. A little bit longer discussion, I think, would be, I'd like to summarize and organize some of the opposition communication that we've received so far and provide our viewpoint on that opposition, both specifics and generally. I would like to also share the perspective of one of the buyers who would like to buy one of these lots, if time allows. And I think that I would like to share basically what we think really should be considered by the commission in making the decision. So those are four areas I'd like to cover. I'll cover as many of them as I can in a reasonable amount of time. I did send, my husband and I sent a letter on the 19th of July to the commissioners, I think, summarizing where we stood on the application. You have learned today that it meets the requirements. We're requesting no waivers or exceptions to county policy regarding size of lot. All the outside approvals have been obtained. The staff recommended approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. We sought technical guidance and worked with the staff at the Planning and Zoning Department to make sure that the proposed plat met all the requirements. We, as landowners, you know, believe we should be able to subdivide and sell a parcel that meets all the county requirements. I also recognize the committees responsible to hear public comment, and we're here to participate in that process this evening. I am here, on behalf of my husband and I, to participate in that process this evening. I would take the opportunity to cite a number of similar cases that have been approved recently and a couple of years ago, and maybe a little further than that. There are numerous examples, but I will cite three. And the first one is the first item that was on your consent agenda earlier today, and it was the first item on the work agenda last week, and that is, I believe it's called the barnyard. This is a remarkably similar application to ours. It contains a five-acre lot, a landlocked 20 in the back with an easement, and then another lot of a different size. That was remarkably similar, as I said, and it was approved. Similarly, right across the street from our current property, there is a rezoning that was approved, I believe in late 2019, and it contained three five-acre lots and two eight-acre lots. That also went through the planning and zoning process. And then I'll cite a third one. I'm really not very familiar with this subdivision, but it is right in the neighborhood, and that is a subdivision that is on 168th Street, one of the streets that borders Apex Acres. And it is also a five-acre lot at the street with easement back to a 20-acre landlocked, and then the homeowner, or the property owner, then built a new home on the remaining acreage. And so I don't remember when that was approved. I just know that it's been there for at least a couple of years. So those are the things that we would cite as a precedent. I think that it should be approvable, and we certainly are requesting approval of the application. I do understand that there has been some opposition to the application, and for my own benefit, so that I could process and understand the opposition, I did read all of the opposition emails that were part of the packet last week and this week. And just so that I could process it, I tried to bucket things a little bit, and I'm going to go ahead and tell you what I think the five buckets of concern that have been represented in the opposition emails, and I'll, of course, give you our viewpoint on that. The first one, I think, is sort of a broad category. I think it's really the biggest and most important feeling among the opposition that the policy and practice of five-acre lots should not be allowed in this case. There is an objection to the size and shape of the five-acre lot. You saw that that is not a perfect rectangle. They've called it unnatural, said that it crosses a pond, and the opponents prefer symmetrical lots and also prefer lots that have more road frontage than the county requires. There is a fear by the opponents of the application for congestion, the appearance of a subdivision in the area. One opposition email seems to oppose any size lot, even the 20, if the house might be constructed such that it interferes with their view of the rolling hills, which is a very nice view. And there is a feeling that the land was intended for livestock and farmland. That was one of the statements that was in one of the emails as well. I think the crux of it is that the neighbors who are opposing the application simply do not want any more homes in the area. That's what I surmise from what I've read in the emails. They really simply wish to prevent the additional, you know, construction of additional homes in the area. Factually, there are some inaccuracies here. First of all, the five-acre lot does not cross the pond. The shape is really according to our discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is shaped the way it is because they did not want us to cross a pond, and so we go around the contours of that pond. The narrow part of that lot is agricultural land preservation. I think Mr. Jones has probably explained that 20% of the lot needs to be in agricultural land preservation. That back part of the lot is agricultural land preservation. It backs right up to the other lot, the 11-acre lot, that also is required to have agricultural land preservation, so what you have is an area that will be generally undisturbed back there, and the contours of that lot are not necessarily going to be visible. I want to address, too, the concern that this land should be preserved for farmland and livestock. In fact, livestock is not allowed according to the Apex Acres covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Livestock for commercial use, I should say. We are only allowed to have domestic pets. Some of us have horses in the subdivision, and I know of one neighbor who has cattle, but I think they're domestic pets, or at least 4-H projects at one point in time. So there really isn't any purpose for livestock here. And as for farmland, I would say that the people who have horses have harvested hay, and that's about the only farming that's being done on here. Granted, these lots, a good many of them are zoned agricultural. One of these will still be zoned agricultural, and some of the other lots are. But to portray it as if some sort of family farms are being, you know, usurped by this lot split is simply not true. I think the density of housing is something that you asked about during the work session last week. This change is going to result in a change from one house for 36 acres to one house for 18 acres, and I can explain. Although there are three lots, one family wants to buy two of them and not build a house on that lot. And I can point that out. I think it's Lot, which Lot is that? B or C? I think it's C. At any rate, the 20-acre lot is one that is not intended, based on the current sale proposed, to have a home on it. So that's where I get the home density of 1 to 18 instead of one house to 36 acres. But even if you did construct a lot, or did construct a home on that, the density would be one house per 12 acres, which is certainly comparable with the lots that are right next to it, 7A and 7B, which are about 13 acres. So that is the, sort of, I think, the big bucket of concern that's been expressed. A second concern is that the lot split will decrease home and land values. I think nothing could be further from the truth. Nothing much has been going down in price in that area, and not just because it's a relatively hot real estate market. I've listened to my neighbors complain about their property taxes going up every year because values are going up. So I don't think there's really any evidence to prove that property values are going to be damaged by this lot split. There's also a feeling that somehow Apex Acres should be held apart from the county policies and practices, and what it boils down to is that neighbors should control the sale of my assets. I disagree and believe that existing county policies and practices, which have been developed in a considered way through a public process and balance the interests of Clay County citizens, should be what we consider and judge this application against. The fourth area of concern, or set of concerns that I've identified in reading all of the emails, is what I'll call aesthetics and unfounded assumptions. I am certain that the people who oppose this application would not like my characterization or my title, but I'm trying to characterize it as I see it from my point of view. This includes things like the house on the 5-acre lot will be right by the lot line to 7A. The house will look horrible. There's going to be an unsightly driveway going up to, or going back to, the 20-acre lot. As I've said, there's not going to be a driveway.
I'll tell you what, because I don't want to get into too much of a back and forth, so try not to characterize the positions of other people. Let's just go ahead and kind of keep it onto the factual part of it, so that way I think it'll keep the conversation more compact, more.
Fair enough, fair enough. What has been stated is that there is a pipeline near the easement, and there's been a question of whether there's enough room. That easement is 60 feet wide. It's almost as wide as Quinn Road, so I believe that there is sufficient room. There has been a statement in opposition emails that there is insufficient building sites. We believe there are plenty of building sites on all of the, well, not all of, because one already has a house and it won't get another one, but there are plenty of building sites, and appropriate building sites, on both of the newly created lots. There's a concern by one homeowner that that driveway will damage, cause damage to their fence because it goes along that fence line. I don't know how to resolve that for the homeowner. We have informed the potential buyers of the concern. So that's a fourth area. A fifth area of concern and remarks that have been made in some of the opposition emails, I will call them character attacks on myself and my husband, as well as our real estate agent. I'm not going to address those unless you, as commissioners, tell us that those things are going to be taken into consideration in your thinking about whether or not you approve this application. I don't want to address those. But if it is, I will address the comments that have been made. All of the opponents, at least the emails that we have, you know, had access to, all of them, except Mr. Hawkins, who submitted an email for this meeting, are neighbors and they're neighbors that I know, and I count them as decent people, with whom I disagree about whether or not this application should be approved. It feels to me, and I'm characterizing my own viewpoint, not anyone else's, it feels to me as if a neighborhood frenzy has broken out about the real impact of this lot split. There are arguments put forth in communication, we've been allowed to see, that I believe are inaccurate, such as saying the lot line goes over the pond. I don't think that many of the remarks in opposition emails are relevant or should be relevant and considered, and it really seems to ask the commissioners to ignore the Clay County planning and zoning policies and practices. The harm, I believe, is exaggerated or, in some cases, even imagined. I grant you, this change is difficult and disliked, and I recognize the angst of that kind of change and what's felt. I have been through, as a homeowner, because I bought this property with my husband in 1996, we have been through the lot split of Lot 7. We have been through the lot split of the lots directly across the street on Quinn Road, and neither of those have affected either our quality of life or our use of the property. I can say more about that, but I'm going to go ahead and move on in the interests of time. I would like to share the perspective of one of the potential buyers of one of these lots. I have asked, it is a letter that we received last October when the potential buyer made an offer on the property. I think their voice is important to be heard here. I'm going to leave off last names and workplaces because I don't think it's relevant.
Yeah, please do.
And the letter says, it's only three paragraphs. Dear John and Nanette, I wanted to introduce myself and my family. My name is Andrea, and I live in Kansas City with my husband, Josh.
Could you, instead of reading the whole, could you just kind of characterize it for us a little bit?
I will. Ever since, they have two children, Ruby and Margot. At the time this was written, they were four and one, and they've dreamed of having a place in the country where our kids can play safely in their yard ever since Ruby was born. They've been searching for the perfect place, and they wrote this letter the day they made the offer. And it says, "We've been looking for the perfect place to build our farmhouse. Visited your property last night. You may have seen the girls running around," and we did. They had so much fun running. And what she says is, "I really want them to be able to grow up in the country where they are free to run and play. I'd love to make that land our home and build our dream home for our girls. We hope that you consider our offer and that we will be able to call you neighbors soon." Sadly, our path in life has taken us somewhere else, and we won't be, Ruby and Margot's neighbors. If the application is approved, and I hope that it is, and this family moves to the neighborhood, I hope that they will be welcomed, and I hope Ruby and Margot have the same opportunities that Ms. Phillips' son and Mr. Rogers' four sons and Ms. Doors, some of the people who oppose the application, her son enjoyed living in the country. I know the people who oppose this application, and I am trying to assure the buyers that if this application is approved and they become their neighbors, they will be good neighbors. They are decent people, and I believe that once this is settled, it'll be fine. Let me wrap up.
Sure.
I've already cited three lot splits that include five-acre lots in this area of the county. Two are on streets that adjoin Apex Acres, and another one has just been approved tonight that's about three miles away. And I will also say that since Apex Acres was created in the mid-1990s, Apex Acres landowners have applied to the Clay County Planning and Zoning Department twice, on two occasions to have lots split. Both of those went before the Planning and Zoning Commission were approved. Both of them went before the county commission and were also approved. Today's case is a third in 23 years, asking to split a lot in Apex Acres. I will argue, the opponents of, I won't characterize how they feel. I will argue that it's substantially not different from those, save some details. This is a lot, it would result in three lots, where the previous splits resulted in two, but this is also a 36-acre plot rather than a 20-acre plot or a 27-acre plot being divided. The case before you will result in a five-acre, 11-acre, and 20-acre lots. The other lot splits resulted in two 10s and two 13s. One of the other differences is this lot, one of these lots follows the natural contours and is not a straight line. The others are perfect rectangles. And I would say that previous lot splits have not hurt land value or home values at all. I believe that the applicant, or the opponents to the application would like to see Clay County policy about five-acre lots changed, and I believe that as citizens of Clay County, they're completely entitled to engage governing bodies and elected officials such as yourself in a public process to do that. I strongly oppose it being done in the middle of this application, and I also strongly oppose that my largest asset, the only asset, with almost the only asset I have that allows me to relocate, is being held hostage to some things that I don't think should be considered in deciding whether to approve the application. I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I understand your responsibility is also to entertain public comment, and I'm happy to respond to any questions or concerns you have at the end of that process.
I will ask, do either commissioners have any questions with this applicant?
I do not, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. What I would ask is that those who'd like to further comment on this issue, if you could sort of maybe line up, that way it gives me an idea of how many people we've got. And then certainly, again, to follow the pattern of making sure the light is green, please let us know what your name is. I don't know, it looks like there might be a number of people, so if we could also, if there is, if you could try to make sure you come up with, you know, a new point, I mean, if you agree, certainly say you agree, but to recite the entire argument over again is not as productive, so just, you know, try to be respectful of the person behind you's time so that they can comment. With that, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Heather Phillip. I own 7B, which also was a lot split that was done in 1998 by the developer, John Pepper, not by me, which has been mentioned, and I was actually.
Would you speak just a little bit more into the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
So John Pepper, the developer of Apex Acres, did the lot split for my particular lot, not me individually, so that was done by the developer. I luckily was able to benefit from that, yes. I wanted to make sure you guys understood that because I was called a hypocrite in the last meeting, so I didn't, I thought I should come up here and be able to mention that. I, too, I was told that not to bring up old information. I hope that you guys read my letter, maybe even listened to the opposition when this was discussed the last time it was requested, six months ago. The only thing, I just want to say that it was stated, and there's a lot of precedence of other properties that have been split, being used. of other properties that have been split, being used. I am a real estate agent of 25 years in the Kansas City, mainly Northland areas, while I'm a lifetime resident of the Northland. And it was stated that, it doesn't happen very often, that the applicant makes these requests, but I was, as a real estate agent, able to pull up information, and the property stated, prior to the last one, I was not as familiar with, the barnyard, which was being discussed or approved today. In addition to the other properties, were all owned by Mr. Higgins, and, so that's the precedence that's being used. So I have that documentation here. So we're using a precedent from somebody that already has what I feel is an upper hand with the county. I'm going to let, I had your thing, I'm going to let, speak. Really, that's the biggest thing for me. I wanted to make the point that it was a developer split previously, not by my, not something that I had done. There are, based on that information, in my opinion, my opinion, by the time you put a house 200 feet back from Quinn Road on that five-acre piece, when there is over an acre, I'd say, from the edge of where that area comes underneath the pond.
Mr. Jones, could you move your cursor in that area, so that, I, I, and make sure that that verifies?
Okay. So, the house has to be 200 feet back from the road, and part of the five acres, to make the five acres, is this area underneath the pond, and I don't know, by the time you put a house there, and you're taking into consideration that that is not buildable space, or even looks like space by the time you put a house there, it's not going to give the visual effect of a five-acre lot. It's going to look very small compared to all the other properties. The properties that, other properties that were split previously have large land, Corps of Engineer land behind them, so they do give a much larger land feel than this one tucked in the middle of the rest of them. And I believe it was pointed out at the last meeting that it looks like a jigsaw puzzle piece trying to fit in, and it doesn't, it does not look appropriate for our area. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Charles Shack, Chuck. I'm right to the west of John and Nan. I am a neighbor with over 23 acres, or almost 23 acres. The only two things that I want to talk about is, why is it the rules are being changed now versus when 10 acres was offered to us, and you all said our frontage was too long, and it wouldn't happen? And now things are being up here changed? And that takes off the aesthetics of what I bought into 17 years ago. All right? Now, I love John and Nan. They're great neighbors there. They're the first people I've met when I walked into the neighborhood. We all ride horses together, they're lovely people, but besides that, I don't want somebody building on the backside of my property. She's telling me that the parents of the people are going to buy it? That's fine, I get that, but it shouldn't be them, it should be all one, sold as one piece.
Just a moment, Mr. Jones, I think was indicating where you were referring to.
I am right on the back end west of them. Yeah, that big, long driveway, that's all me, all the way down. It's a half-mile driveway all the way up. I like it that way, that's what I bought into. Closest neighbor I have is a half-mile in front of me. All right? That's what I bought, and that could be changed, because you all are changing the rules now, when you wouldn't do it for me to buy the 10 acres before. That is why I am here. Besides the five acres, if we're talking about giving the small guy a shot at our living, how much is it that they're selling the acre for on five acres? How much can the little guy go up north and buy an acreage versus what he is getting five acres in Smithville and stealing our view? Because he's not paying for our view. He's paying for this small piece of land. All right? And then he's squeezing a house in there.
Are you talking, are you talking about lots 6A?
The five acres.
Are you talking about lots 6A? Is that the one?
Well, whatever the five acres is, I don't know whatever.
That one right there.
Right, the five acres.
My understanding is there was not to be a house built there. Am I mistaken, Mr. Jones?
Is it going to be split up towards 5, 11, and 20? Yes, there's going to be a house built.
Unless it's in writing, you want to put it in writing, because it won't be a driveway.
We can't turn this into a free-for-all, so...
No, we're not.
The gentleman at the podium has the floor.
But the five acres, if they're trying to give the, the small guy a shot at what we have, and paid for for many years now, they're stealing the view that we have for how much money, an acre, versus what they can go up north and get 15 acres, 15 miles up the road? All right? Now, I think it's ludicrous that you all are even having this discussion. It shouldn't even be happening. If you're changing the rules now, you should have changed them then. I am the person that wanted to buy the 10 acres, and I, there would be no problem with no neighbors building back there close to me. I'm not part of Apex Acres. I am the neighbor that butts up to the fence. That's what, I just don't get why you all don't change the rules, or stay with the rules. One or the two. Because if you did it now, there's a problem a year ago. And like I say, the five acres, how much an acre is it going for? And what is it being sold for? How much money is Chris Higgins making off of this deal versus a full sale? That's what I have a problem with. And you see, I'm starting to get a little bit pissed, because I don't like being here. I've worked hard all day long. I got off at 5:00, took a shower, and I'm here, because I wanted to make sure that my voice was heard. And if nothing comes of it in the right manner, I'm sorry to say this to John and Nan, but it's going to piss me off if it goes the wrong way, because it's not right. None of us bought into this. They bought the 13 acres. Yes, it was split. They didn't do it. The guy who owned the land did it all, from what I understand. Not a second owner after it was broken once. Said my piece, you all know how I feel, so...
A moment. I just, do any commissioners have any questions of this witness? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jacob Hawkins. I own the property that he just clicked on right there, that is just south. Apologize for wearing a hat, I had an operation on my head, so...
Don't worry about it, there's not a particular dress code related to hats.
No dress code, great. I do apologize for wearing a brace hat. I am the newest resident here in Clay County. I have never met anybody in this room before. Three months ago, I bought that piece of property. I feel for Ms. Riley, it is my largest investment. What I'll speak to is a little bit different. Mr. Higgins sold me my house. He, he was the real estate agent for the Miles who sold the house. In my conversations, I, I believe Mr. Higgins is a good man, but in my conversations with him, he was very clear that there were covenants in place that were protecting against lot splits in Apex Acres. He mentioned the five-acre lot split that was just around the corner, and he said, "That can't happen here, because everyone has to sign off on it, and that's not going to happen in this neighborhood." So that was, that was in February of this year that I made the offer. The sale went through in April. The other thing that I would just note is, Mr. Higgins did make a comment last, I hope you go back and watch it, but Mr. Higgins did make a comment that one of my neighbors, again, who I've never met in person, was pitching a fit. I, I think that that's wrong. I think that it was probably a bit misogynistic, and I think that we should be able to speak out and have our voice heard at a meeting like this, or even amongst our neighbors without that kind of talk. The third thing I would just point out is, I don't know that you can split other lots in our neighborhood other than this one. My 27 acres, I think it'd be very difficult to split into, you know, dividing it up for someone else. I don't think that you can split up the lot just east of mine either. So, I just, I think if, if we're going to change the entire landscape of this neighborhood, I think that, that's not what I bought into three months ago. That's not what I thought I was getting into, certainly. I thought that there would be kind of a vote, I thought we had some covenants, and shame on me for not doing more research. You guys know the crazy real estate market. You have, you, you put in your, your offer, and you've got two days, and offer's accepted, and you're done. So, those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any commissioners who have comment, or, excuse me, questions from this witness?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Hi, so I'm Andrea Harding. I'm one of the people that's under contract with the five-acre lot. Nanette read part of my offer letter to her. I just wanted to point out that if we were to put a house there, I guess the concern was, it wouldn't look like a five-acre lot, but the agricultural land preservation behind our house would not be touched, so nothing would be unchanged, and it's going to give the illusion of a much larger place than it is, because there will be nothing done with the pond and the area behind. As far as changing the entire landscape, we're, we're just looking to put a family home, a small family home. We've read the covenants. We plan to build according to the covenants. We don't plan to change anything drastically, other than there will be one more house there. Very excited about the prospect of living here. And I guess there was just some question at the last meeting of how this land would be used, so I wanted to come here in person and give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have for us on our intentions for the land, if you had any.
Any? No, we did have none.
And like I said, that if you can just picture one house there, and then nothing else behind it changes, there's no major changes to any of the other land, it's just a house. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Hi, my name is Josie Hansen. I am pending contract for Lot 6B, so that is a lot with the house and the barns and the pond. We had been searching for acreage in Carney for quite some time, and we're very excited to find this property with the 20 acres in the back, because my mother-in-law, Judith Walters, is going to purchase that 20 acres, and in a few years after I complete grad school and am able to buy it back from them, we will. So, I know there's been some concerns about the easement going across the north side of the property, and although that will exist, if this application is approved, we have no current plans to put a driveway there at all, which I think eliminates some of the concerns of the neighbors, and then there are no plans to put a building or house at this time on the back 20 acres. We intend to make this our home. We would like to have children and raise them here in the school district. I think we will maintain the integrity of the property and the neighborhood, and really look forward to living in the country. And then, as far as the five-acre piece, I know that's not what I'm purchasing, but we currently live, actually, in the house and are renting the property from them, as they live in Arizona. And I've walked the property so many times and feel that the lot lines flow naturally. If we felt differently, we wouldn't be interested in the other two properties. So, I think just two houses, 36 acres, and the 20 in the back at this time will be untouched, and I hope to own it as soon as I financially can. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners on this, for this witness? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Next person, please.
Hi, my name is Judith Walters, and I'm the person wanting to purchase Lot 6C, I believe. We don't have any intentions of building the house on 6C. We, as Josie said, I agree with, I'll probably be the shortest speaker tonight, everything that she has said. We intend on selling it to them when they can afford it, and then raising their family. We just purchased a house about 15 minutes from that area to be close to them, so hopefully someday when I have grandchildren, they'll be close. We have no intentions or anything else, except just having everybody live peacefully. And I don't really have a lot else to say, because I think it's already been said. If you have any questions?
Are there any questions from the commissioner on this witness? No? Thank you very much. Next person, please. Oh, okay, before you go, before we have someone come up for a second round, I want to make sure that there are no other citizens who would care to comment on this, before we would do any kind of short summation, I guess, would be maybe one way to qualify that. Are there any other citizens who would like to comment on this, on these two issues? Seeing, if you could do just a quick summation, and then we'll...
First of all, I don't know why I'm doing this, but I'm going to help you understand what Chuck was talking about. What, what happened, and I'm, I'm going to try to make this really, really quick. What happened is, John and I went out of our way to try to let our neighbors have some of this land, so we weren't selling it to somebody else. And that's what he's talking about, the 10 acres. I think it was actually maybe eight. If you look, and Mr. Jones, if you could please blow it up just maybe a little bit, behind, at the back end of our property, there is an area that is kind of square, that would line up with Lot 1 of Apex Acres. It's about eight acres, it might be 10, I'm not sure. We, and I don't know whether they approached us, or we approached them, but we said, "Wouldn't it be great if you could take that and attach it to your land?" And we went and had a meeting with Planning and Zoning regarding that. And so here's where Chuck, I think, feels that the rules got changed on him. They couldn't just take that land and attach it to their land because of width-to-depth ratio. I'm not going to try to explain that, you know, Kip knows that stuff, and he certainly explained it to me and to Chuck's wife. We went to the meeting at Planning and Zoning together. And so, that was unsuccessful. We were all pretty disappointed about that, because we wanted them to be able to buy that. The next thing we did is that we went to Bill and Diana Fuller, who own Lot 2, and we said, and, and the idea was that maybe Bill and Diana would buy the next eight acres.
Well, the, the, I guess where I'm going with this is, the transactions that were unsuccessful leading up to this, I'm not sure are relevant, except to show good faith and try to, I guess, accommodate concerns. Apart from that, I don't know, Mr. Counselor, are we kind of getting into a little far afield?
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with that. I'm not sure it's, you know, what, what we would call relevant to what we're voting on.
Well, I think this is relevant. So I did try to do several things to let the neighbors by the back. It didn't work. The one declined. We also offered it to Mr. Gascoigne, who's a lot owner, and put it to Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Miles, but we know now he was going to move, so he didn't want it. We decided then that we would plot the 20 acres with the easement and put it on the market. Here, this is relevant. We did, at that point in time, say, "Hey, why don't we offer that to Kathy and Chuck? We're going to plot the 20 anyway, and instead of selling it to someone else, let's offer it to Kathy and Chuck." And we did that. We didn't plot it, but we said that's what we'd do. And we told them that we would sell it to them for $1,000 less an acre than we were going to put it on the market for.
Once again, I think we're kind of...
They considered it.
Getting off point.
Okay. They considered it and declined. My point here is, they were offered several opportunities, some not through their own fault that didn't work out, but we offered to let them buy it, and they wouldn't. Now they don't want me to let, don't want to let me sell it to anyone else. That's the relevant point here.
Now, now, I see where you're going with that, but our, our judgment is going to be whether or not this is compliant, and whether it, you know, whether the, the argument that it should be, the, the...
And I agree.
Events leading up to it really don't play into that particular point.
And I agree with you. You should consider the criteria that Mr. Jones laid out. I don't want you to consider the fact that Chuck is mad that somebody might someday build a house back there.
Well, I, the thing is, somebody's emotional state on this is not also relevant. We're trying to deal with this as it is compliant with, with county, the county development plans.
And that is, that is what I hope you do.
Thank you.
That you look at the precedence and the, the development plan and make the decision based...
See, now, no, 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 but, okay, now we're getting way into, because we're not going to have a, a back and forth into who said what and what said, who said what. I, I, I can't allow that, because I think it, it drags us on and it takes us into irrelevant territory.
I'll move on from that. I, I don't know why this is, I don't know why this is relevant. Ms. Phillip did talk about, and made, wanted to stress, I think because Mr. Higgins said she was the first one to divide a lot, and I said that in my email as well. I don't think that's relevant, except that it is, it gives the appearance that Ms. Phillip is for lot splits when it's hers and not when it's not, when it's not hers. And so that's the, where the issue of whether she was the, the person who made the split... when it's not hers. And so, that's where the issue of whether she was the person who made the split came in. She did not own the property when it was split. But I still have my 1998 letter I got from Planning and Zoning, and by the way, their letters haven't changed much at all since 1998, and it lists Heather Duty as the applicant, Heather Duty et al. I don't think that's relevant either, but it's been made quite, quite a...
Like I say, an offhand remark that wouldn't be relevant, I kind of allow, because I can't do every single thing, but when we start getting into a discussion into irrelevant territories, and I have to rein things in a bit, it's a random remark, is one thing. So, yeah, please, kind of stay to, you know, what the heart of the matter, please.
That's all I wanted to do. I know Mr. Hawkins is new, and he opposes this. There's absolutely nothing in the covenants. I can't speak for Chris Higgins. He is not here in what he said. I certainly looked at the CCNRs before I bought it. They were included in my title policy, and I got a copy of them. The only thing I can tell you is that, and this is what Mr. Higgins relayed to me, it's not firsthand knowledge, that Mr. Jacobs talked to him about buying the back 20 as well, and he was told it was under contract.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, one more person, but, you know, that's what I'm trying to avoid, is a back-and-forth kind of a thing. Please go ahead, and please re-identify yourself for the audio recording.
Yeah, Jacob Hawkins. I just wanted to respond that I only reached out to Mr. Higgins once I learned of this entire situation, to try to prevent this, another house on the back property, on the 20 acres, and he said it was already under contract. I had no knowledge of that. I reached out to him about that. What I would offer, I don't know procedures in plating lots. This is my first adventure in this. I would offer that I think that maybe this should, this process should go forth before we sell plots to people and get hopes up about building houses. And I feel for my potential neighbors here, because they should be able to build a house and buy a piece of land. I think this process should have gone forth before, so that this conversation can happen without, without them getting their hopes up about something like this, and so that neighbors do have an opportunity to voice their concerns and maybe buy the pieces of land. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I just want to, are there any, so we'll go back to discussion with the commission. Are there any comments or questions from you, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think in the light of the, there seems to be some new information this evening.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little bit more?
I'm having a quiet night. So, I think there has been some new information tonight that we did not have last week, and I would be happy to step back from my motion to approve this and say, we put this off for another week. And so, we have a little more time.
Let's deal with that first. We'll go ahead and deal with that. You're making a motion that to withdraw, but you don't, it doesn't require a motion. You can just withdraw your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion has been withdrawn for the approval of 2021, 192, and 193. I guess we'll do one more. We can still discuss a little bit, we just don't have an issue on the table. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't. I mean, I appreciate the discussion this evening, and if it's the will of the commission to put it off a week or two, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay. I would make a recommendation. We've had this come up on a couple of other issues. That is where we ended up, in fact, the next issue is an example of that, where we had had a number of opportunities for there to be input from citizens. I would think that we should consider closing the record on this, because at some point, we have to, we have to make a decision. Like I said, and the criteria that we are making that decision on is a relatively narrow one. We have more information, but I'm not sure how much of it is relevant to where we need to go to make this decision. However, is it the will of the commission, and I don't know, Mr. Counselor, we need a vote to close the record, if that is what is our intention to do, and then consider it at a future meeting?
Well, I think at this point, you know, obviously, we need a motion where it's going to land. If it's, you know, it could still be moved for approval tonight. It could be moved to move it to next week. But I think there certainly should be consensus among the commission, and whether that be through consensus or through a motion as to what that record should look like. Having said that, obviously, if there are new questions raised, and there's direction to staff or direction for additional information, we would certainly like to have that and an opportunity to get the information to the commission as needed.
Okay, so perhaps we don't close the record, but I don't, what is...
And I would probably suggest maybe keep it open, if it's going to move to next week in another two-week cycle, that maybe it come back next Thursday for additional testimony or additional evidence is requested by the commission, and then at that point, close it.
Okay. My inclination is not to necessarily put it on the next work session, but to put it on the, you know, two weeks from today, on that, two weeks from tonight, the Wednesday session, at least, two weeks. I think otherwise, two more nights of discussion on this, I think, I don't see that as being particularly productive, myself. But, once again, that's my recommendation. I'd be happy to hear the, hear the other commissioners' views and then come to a consensus. I'm certainly willing to compromise on that view. So, Commissioner Carpenter, what are your thoughts?
I'm happy to defer to Commissioner Thompson. If we do it in two weeks, that's perfectly fine with me. And I, you know, so this is primarily in the Eastern District, which I just want to respect the wishes of the Eastern Commissioner on her desires on that.
Would, let me go ahead and summarize that, if this is okay. So, is it, can I get consensus that we then move this to the meeting two weeks from this evening, assuming that meeting, of course, is scheduled, but the next Wednesday evening meeting that we have, and then we will take it up at that time? Does that, does that give you the, what you need as far as time? And then at that time, the record will not be closed, so we will be available to hear additional testimony?
I'm comfortable with that, yes, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, if that's the consensus of the commission, we will instruct, we've got, okay, we've got one...
I apologize, but I'm an out-of-state landowner, and I understand what you're, what I think you're deciding is to move it to two weeks from now and not close the record. So, as the applicant, should I expect to be here again in two weeks?
That does, being out of...
Does the record get closed at some point?
Yeah, being, not being a local landowner, that does, of course, work a hardship on your ability to make your case. So, Commissioner Thompson, how would you, how would you like, it's your motion, your, not motion, but your initiative, so how would, how would you address her concerns?
I would think probably in two weeks, come back. I think that would probably be a positive thing to move forward with this. I would envision us probably closing the record on this next week, if we could. I think I just need a little more time.
Next week?
Two weeks. I think two weeks.
In two weeks?
Yeah, because we talked about Wednesday, because it needs to be on the correct...
It's either, maybe it can come back this, this coming Thursday on the work session, or it can come back in two weeks for the business session.
I would be comfortable even with a week, just to straighten out some of the, the light, in the light of the new information that some of the citizens have brought up, I just want to look into this a little further. I want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence for everybody involved.
And if I may ask a technical question, maybe to Carter, who's not in the room. I know we livestreamed these. Do we have a method, we haven't had this come up yet since we started livestreaming. Is there a method for someone who is not here to participate in an interactive way? Not just observe it as a livestream, but actually participate, so that, I don't know how far the distance is, but...
1,300 miles. A technological solution would be wonderful. If I need to appear in person, I will do that, but a technological solution would be wonderful.
We started a new process with livestreaming, so I'll apologize. I don't know if we're able to have citizens interactively participate. I assume we can.
I think you'd always do the phone-in.
We certainly can do a phone-in.
We can.
Perhaps Zoom.
So, I'm getting a nod that we can do something that would be virtual.
It may not be the highest technology, but we can.
We watched the YouTube livestream of the work session last week. It is great. It is not two-way, but it is, it is great.
Well, it sounds like we can do something that would allow someone remotely to participate.
Thank you.
I didn't get a lot of new information necessarily, but so, would your preference be our next, our meeting next week or our meeting in two weeks? What would be your preferences? Because it's, you know, I want to make sure that I'm accommodating your concerns.
No, no, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I think it's more of like, I need to have a discussion with Planning and Zoning to see what kind of conditions we can put in, if we can do something to make sure that there is nothing to be built on that back property, see if there's something that can satisfy the neighbors. I know that there were some issues with the selling of the land previously, and unfortunately, I was not part of the commission at that point in time and not here to speak upon that. But I think if we can do something that would allow, like, we don't have, you know, we can write something that they don't have a driveway put in, if we make sure that it doesn't interfere with that pipeline. I don't know if we just need some time. If I need to just speak with Planning and Zoning to get those matters taken care of.
Let me ask a question of Mr. Jones. If I remember correctly, and we read a number of these, so I want to make sure I'm not getting this confused with another, another one of these issues, but any construction would have to come before Planning and Zoning, would it not? If this were to go through an additional building beyond what is being contemplated in what is before us would require another trip to Planning and Zoning. Am I correcting that, Mr. Jones?
I'm not sure I totally understand the question. They're going to, each, if they're going to build a house, they have to apply for a building permit, but are you asking if they subdivide it again, or...
If they were, once this is done, would they be, and again, like I say, I might, I want to make sure I got this straight. If another house were to be built, would it require anything else from Planning and Zoning, or would this be pretty much out of our hands at that point?
If this was approved, then they, they have to get a building permit through the Planning and Zoning Department, but it would not come back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission or the County Commission.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. If it's on that back 20 acres and it meets all the criteria, then I think a building permit would be required, but it would be administratively approved, and I would not anticipate any action coming back to this commission. Is that, is that fair, Mr. Jones?
That is correct. We're trying to create buildable lots, so there would be two additional buildable lots with one house per lot, if approved.
Okay. That answers my question, because like I say, I want to make sure I had that particular detail straight. So, you're, we could, go ahead and make a motion that we put this on at whatever meeting you have in mind. That way, we have it on the record. So, go ahead, and if you don't mind, make a motion related to that on those two issues.
I'll make a motion to put 2021-192 and 2021-193 for the upcoming meeting in two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
If I could kind of suggest an amendment to that motion, just for clarity, if it's the two-week meeting, would request that the motion use, put it on to the regular agenda, which will be an agenda for them.
Thank you. So, that would be, the motion has been made to put 2021, 192, 193 on the regular agenda for the meeting schedule for...
August 11th.
August, yes. That'd be August 11.
11.
11?
11.
Very good. Where has July gone? Very well. Motion has been made to, as I just stated, discussion. Questions, Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That moves us to 2021, 161. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-161 is the conditional, the request for approval of a conditional use permit for the St. Mary's Home for Mothers. Since we last met, the conditions that were put upon this resolution by the commissioners have been met, and so on your resolution, you'll see that condition number two has been changed from 15 years to five, and condition number 15 and condition number 16 have been added as opposed to the previous resolution. And I'm not sure there's anybody here necessarily speak on that, because you've already heard it a number of times.
Right. The other thing that I would like to point out is, as we have, that this issue has been brought up on a number of previous meetings. The records are closed, so we will not be taking further information on that. So, we will be looking at this as, as a discussion within the commission and then act upon it in that manner. If there are any questions, certainly staff is here to answer them, but we are at the point now where no new information is going to be allowed in. So, with that, is there a motion, is there a motion related to 2021, 161?
I move that we approve 2021, 161.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021, 161. Discussion. Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, if you have any, any further comments, and you're recognized to close.
No, just that I appreciate the discussion we've had on this. I understand it, understand the purpose and the reasoning on both sides of the argument, and don't begrudge anybody their point of view on it. I think we've had a good length of discussion. I think some of the additions and changes that we made at the previous meeting were the correct ones, and I think with those attached, I feel comfortable moving this forward and hope that in the long run, that this home proves to help a lot of people, and hopefully, in time, can be a good addition to, to the area, and I'll be voting in affirmation.
Very well. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to, make sure I did get it through there. Brings us to 2021, 167. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-167 is to approve...
Thank you.
Is to approve a sole source vendor momentum for tax collection and distribution software. The collector is here and has comments. Nope. Collector has no comments. Again, we've seen this, we've seen this movie before.
Absolutely. Is there a motion on 2021, 167?
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-167.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021, 167. Discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Excuse me, that brings us to 2021, 199. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-199 is to approve the final settlement, the final annual settlement of the existing and exiting collector. Any comments? And comments forthcoming?
Please proceed.
Lydia McAvoy, Collector, I apologize. I was talking to County Council. Are we considering them both together, Mr. Administrator?
I'm sorry, could you say that?
Both of the motions together for the final settlement and the full quietus, or are we talking about them one at a time?
We are taking up 190...
This is 167?
No, 190. We just approved 167.
I apologize.
We are, the motion is on the floor for the approval of 2021, 199.
Which is the final settlement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The only comment I have on that is this. This is the promised update that we were going to give, and I believe that we sent an email actually to County Council. It has a table of contents. We ran reports out of our tax collection software of the reports today, both cash machines. Barbara and I crawled all over the annex in Liberty and made sure there was no cash sticking around anywhere, and it counted for every penny. And then we did request bank statements as of 5:00 PM from Commerce on every single statement. So, this is an update through 5:00 today that we want to be entered as a record, if at all possible. I know it's big, but it should be kept somewhere. And Barbara and I have a copy as well.
Thank you.
The statutes constitute some sort of a receipt in triplicate. I think that that's the annual settlement or the settlement that you would approve, that we would each have a copy of, but this also is in triplicate. So, we have lots of things in triplicate that I get a copy, she gets a copy, and the county has a copy. So, that's my only comments on those, on that.
Are there any questions of the collector? Mr. Carpenter?
No, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
No questions. It's going to be weird not to have any downstairs. I was going to say, it'll be, it'll be a fun month. We got a month left, but yeah. So, but thank you for all your work down in the collector's office.
Very well. I'm sorry, was there a motion made on 2021? No, there was not. Is there a motion related to 2021, 199?
I move that we approve 2021, 199.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021, 199. Any comment from the public? Seeing none? Are there any comment from the commission? Seeing none. Is there any comment from the commission?
No, thank you.
You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2021-198. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, now that the annual final settlement has been approved, the 2021-198 is to approve the full quietus to the existing collector. Comments?
Yes, Lydia McAvoy, the collector. So now I was going to say my goodbyes. You guys said it before, but, very short, I promise. But 10 years ago, I started the job of collector, had absolutely no idea what I was getting myself into. Found out that it really was the job of my dreams. I have loved helping taxpayers, I really have, even the ones that scream at me, because I feel like it's their right to do that, and I'm glad that I was there to listen. I have really loved managing my current staff. We call each other foxhole buddies, and that is no exaggeration, and we will share a bond forever on that. And so to every taxpayer that I've ever met, even if you've yelled at me, I will miss you. And you are being left in excellent hands. And to my staff, I can never say thank you enough for the loyalty and hard work through 10 years. I do have to say, I do have to depart from the, the happy comments for just a moment. When I ran for elected office, I knew I was accountable to the people, and I was ready for that. What I did not realize is that I was going to be accountable to people who sat behind computer screens and made stuff up without ever talking to me to my face. And so I never expected to work so hard and then have things distorted. And so all I would ask is this. Maybe it was me, and maybe I brought that controversy on myself because I fight back, but for every bit of integrity I had, she has 10 times more. And every time I tried to get it right, she will get it right. And my staff didn't sign up for a fight. They have no agenda. They are really good at collecting and distributing taxes and following statutes. So if the internet trolls have any plans to continue to attack my office, there's nothing there to fight. So leave them alone. Let them do their jobs, and they will serve you well. And if me leaving the office buys them that, then it's worth it. And thank you very much.
By the way, I, we are on, I believe, 2021-198. I think what's on display now is number 200. Just so, okay. So are there any questions or comments for the collector from the commission?
Well, I just want to say, you know, thank you for the service. You've always been great to work with. You've always been very good to me, and I'm, I'm grateful to you and look forward to keeping in touch.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
I think I said my goodbyes, but I will say it again, because we've had six years together of, between clerk and collector, and it still will be weird not bringing the tax book down to you. I'm still getting like that feeling, like I should be getting ready to prepare the tax book, bring it to you.
You have also been a foxhole buddy, so.
So, you know, so we just keep our head down, so.
Thank you.
Is there a motion related to 2021-198?
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-198.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2021-198. Discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you.
You are recognized to close?
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to 2021, number 200. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-200 is to approve the collector's bond for the newly appointed county collector, Ms. Barbara O'Reilly. Comments?
I presented the bond to you. Any questions, comments? I have none.
Question or comments for, very well, is, by the way, I did, I was kind of going through there. I thought everybody kind of took one of the collector's items to comment on. Certainly, you know, I came in in the same cycle as the present collector and the, the now commissioner, formerly clerk, so we all kind of came in in sort of the same class, so to speak. So certainly, you know, it's always a bittersweet thing. We certainly wish you well in your future endeavors, but on the other hand, we get to know each other pretty well around here, especially when it gets, it gets to be a rather sticky situation. It's, you sort, you can sort out who the, who your friends are. With that, is there a motion for the approval of 2021-200?
Move that we approve 2021-200.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-200. Discussion. Commissioner Thompson?
No, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you for your service. That brings us to 2021-202. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-202 is to approve amended agreements with the agencies that are assisting us with the emergency rental assistance plan. This would be called 2.0. And those relationships are techn, are Community Care Link, Community Action Agency of Kansas City, the Carney Enrichment Council, Metro Lutheran Ministry, the Northland Healthcare Access, the Salvation Army, and United Way of Greater Kansas City. And as you will remember from a couple of weeks ago, we've added the Guadalupe Center to that. This is, I would suggest, ministerial in its intent. This is simply to reestablish those agreements as we move into the next level of the emergency rental assistance plan.
Thank you very much. The gentleman who has put a lot of work in on this, our auditor, Mr. Hurlbert, is in training right now, so is unable to, to make it, but certainly I think that this has been to date a successfully run program. Thanks, thank you also to our administrator for putting this program together, and I have every confidence that it will continue to be a successful, a successful in aiding our citizens, both tenants and landlords, in navigating their way through the rough waters caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. So I am certainly, I, I think that's been a great job, and I'm looking forward to the good that we can do going forward using this program.
If you don't mind, I would add one thing that I left out, and that is that the city of Kansas City, their application portal is still closed, and this also includes our ability to service the county, or the Kansas City residents of Clay County, which was not the case previously. So this will expand our ability to provide service to the entire residential communities of Clay County now that Kansas City is included as a result of this. That's one additional thing that I left out.
And I think that's an important point, because certainly we, we are here to serve all Clay Countyans, the way the, the settlements were structured at the beginning, or the way the, the program was structured in the beginning was so that the city of Kansas City would indeed be serving those citizens of Clay County who are also citizens of Kansas City. With Kansas City being in the position they are in right now, this allows us to step up and make sure that citizens of Kansas City, Clay County are getting the, the services and the benefits that they should get as, as citizens of Clay County. Any questions?
No, I think you all said it well. I think this is good to move forward with and look forward to supporting it. Mr. Thompson?
Is there a motion related to 2021-202?
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-202.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-202. Discussion. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to 2021-196.
Commissioners, 2021-196 is to approve a sole source vendor, that being Thompson Reuters West. This is for law books and services. The requester is Purchasing, and Purchasing is here for additional comment.
Please proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. Leslie DeGroot, purchasing manager. Quickly want to thank county auditor Victor Hurlbert for stepping in and speaking on this item for me last week. So this is, just to recap what Victor already mentioned, this is a, not necessarily a renewal, but like an annual identification of Thompson Reuters as a sole source vendor. Last year, it was approved, the resolution in 2020-81. And this is, we, it's good policy to do these on an annual basis. Last year, the circuit clerk, circuit courts presented this item to the commission, and it was, it was approved for the purchase of their law books. This vendor is used across multiple departments, which is why it's kind of coming from the purchasing department this year. Victor, I believe, mentioned he's using it for the rental program, the rental assistance program for ID, ID verification. The prosecutor's office uses it as well for online legal research, and I believe the collector's office as well uses it for their delinquent, delinquent taxes, I forget what the name is. Skip tracing. Got it. So if you have any questions, any additional questions about the sole source vendor request, I am happy to answer.
It's my understanding that this does in fact comply with the sole source requirements that we have, so that's, it is appropriate that it be under that heading?
Absolutely.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none. Is there a motion related to 2021-196?
I move that we approve 2021-196.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-196. Discussion. Commissioner Thompson? You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our regular session. Next on the agenda is comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any items not covered under tonight's agenda? Sorry, I'm looking at you. You're the last member of the public here. Not trying to single you out. It's what you get for wearing a hat. Are there any office holders who would care to comment on any items not appearing on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any agencies who would like to comment on any items not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. That brings us to county administrator comments. Mr. Administrator?
Just a quick one. Tomorrow, here in this room, we'll be acknowledging service awards for a lot of folks that provide excellent service and attention to the citizens of Clay County, and proud of all of them. It's a long roster of people that have worked. There's a 30-year award, and then all the way down to lesser years than that, but we're looking forward to that event and looking forward to recognizing the service of those folks that served the residents of Clay County.
Very good. Comments from commissioners? Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Okay, Commissioner Carpenter?
I do, and I'll try to be as, as brief as possible. You know, obviously tracking what's happening with COVID in this country and, and here locally. I do think, you know, I'm sure you all have both heard from folks since Kansas City announced a mask mandate in light of the new CDC guidelines. I've heard from people on both sides as to whether or not they think Clay County ought to comport with Kansas City's decision in that regard. In light of that, I've had a number of conversations today with medical professionals, including our county health director as well as folks who are working on this on a daily basis. What I can tell you is that my takeaway from those conversations, in addition to my takeaway from the guidance that we've received from the CDC, is that at the very least, this is something that we as a commission are going to need to keep our eye on. You know, we have areas of this state like Green County, which is frankly a very similar county to Clay County, both in terms of size as well as density. It's a mix of urban, suburban, and rural, just like us, with probably the biggest portion of that being suburban. Over the course of the last couple of months, they've seen their situation spiral out of control, to the point where they now have 300-plus people hospitalized between Cox Hospital and Mercy down there. They have days in which individual hospitals have 5, 10, 15, 20 people a day dying. What we know is that our county is very similar. We know that our vaccination rates in Clay County are pretty similar to Green County. We might be marginally better, but it's not much. And we know that this virus is the same virus there as it is here. Logic would suggest that there is at least a very real possibility that we could see similar outcomes here. I hope that we don't. But simply hoping that we don't is probably not enough. Talked with the chief medical officer for Liberty Hospital today. Some of the information that he shared is that 90% of their ICU beds are occupied, 56% of which are COVID. He says that they're getting younger and sicker, and it's his opinion that Clay County joined Kansas City in instituting the mask mandate. So, you know, we've got an independent county health board in this county that is, at least has the initial decision here to make, and I understand that. And I just want us to, at the very least, not assume that everything is going to go smoothly with our COVID future in the coming weeks and months. And at the very least, if we're not going to join Kansas City, I want us to at least keep an open mind that as data continues to come in and as, if our hospitals start going in the direction of Green County, which to be clear, they're already going in that direction. It's just a matter of degree at this point. You know, again, Liberty Hospital is 90% ICU-filled, 56% of which are COVID. I just think it's something for us to keep our eye on and keep an open mind about, about potential mitigation steps that we can take. You know, it's my view that we ought to join Kansas City, both from a public health perspective as well as from a, a regional consistency point of view. You know, we've got a lot of businesses here in Clay County that are in Kansas City, and then we've got a lot of businesses here in Clay County that are not. And, you know, that's, that's its own reason to try to keep a consistency, so as not disadvantage one business over another. I think that's all my thoughts for now. Just look forward to some ongoing conversations about this and hope we can be willing to adapt if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think I have any additional comments. I think we've, I think that pretty much rounds off commission comments. Approval of minutes of previous sessions, there aren't, excuse me, there aren't listed for this evening. Are there any written reports to be submitted to the commission? There are no written reports to be submitted to the commission at this time. We have none listed under executive sessions. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.